Pledge of his allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk call of roll.
Counselor Zabbert. Counselor Garcia.
President.
Counselor Taylor.
Here.
Counselor Ray Cooperow. Counselor Robinson. Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Vido. Counselor Maldonado. Counselor Rodriguez.
Here.
Counselor Abadina.
Here.
And Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Nine members present, two absent.
At this time, we'll entertain any celebratory resolutions?
The first resolution is introduced by Counselor Robinson and all members of the council. Whereas in 1926, Carter G. Woodson, the child of slave parents, established Negro History Week to celebrate and study the accomplishments of African Americans. And whereas this event evolved into Black History Month in the United States, a country of African Americans. And whereas, as Carter G. Woodson valued education and believed that it was never too late to learn, it is beneficial for all Americans to continue to learn about the heritage and the experiences of all Americans. And whereas it is through learning that we became enlightened and come to understand each other more clearly. And whereas the Louis H. Latimer Society and the Chelsea Black Community will be holding events throughout the month of February, now therefore be it resolved that the Chelsea City Council hereby recognizes February as Black History Month and wishes to thank the Louis H. Latimer Society and the Chelsea Black Community for their contributions to the city of Chelsea and beyond.
Chair recognizes Counselor Robinson.
Doctor Shenanigans under suspension, I'll be very brief. Chelsea Black Community will be holding a bunch of events during the month and they'll forward their calendar here. And Latimer Society will be doing a few months, a few events during the month. One particularly, I'll be working at the complex with the science kids in the fourth grade, helping them prep for MCAS. So also be some events that'll be happening in the community.
Would anyone else like to speak? Seeing none, that motion passes under unanimous consent.
We have the approval of the minutes, January 13, 2020.
Chair recognizes Counselor Lopez to accept and file under suspension, seeing none.
A communication from the city manager, the first communication.
We gotta go to speak, public speaking.
Public speaking, sorry.
We'll now open the public speaking portion of the meeting. Anyone wishing to address the city council may do so, please state your name and address.
My name is Roman Puckel. I live at 191 Linfield Street, PB, Mass. I'm a Vietnam-era veteran and a member of the Polish-American Veterans Post-13 of Chelsea. I'd like to refer to item number six, ID number 20, CM 66A. I am in favor of issuing a waiver of intent to Mr. Harley DeMire. However, an investigation into the hiring through human resources is necessary. When I applied for the position of Veteran Service Agent years ago, I was interviewed by a party of three persons. However, it appears to me that the department head alone selects the applicant for the position. Furthermore, I never received a notification of the reason why I was not considered. What is the protocol? What are the rules and regulations and procedures? What is the present hiring policy? I'd like to actually know that because I don't know if there's different policies and I'd just like to know the exact, that exact information. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Yes.
Testing? Okay. Thank you, everyone. This is sort of general in a sense. It is not bearing on the commission that I'm on. I'm at 260 Clark Ave, in the Margolis Apartments of the Chelsea Housing Authority. I've also noticed that, is there a windmill in Chelsea that somehow was abandoned? It seems to be like a windmill way off in the distance. Unfortunately, I don't know where that's located. And if it's just sitting there and no one's using it, isn't that a little bit of a, I don't know? It's tough because I remember when I lived other places that the wind, any talk of windmills was very, very difficult and very political. So I don't know about that. I have heard from the neighborhood and Facebook, too. They'd like more competition in terms of services and goods. It seems like the same companies are here and it takes 10 to 15 to 20 years for competition. I've also heard from the neighborhood going Clark Ave and Broadway, the 900th block and such. Is there enough housing for veterans and disabled and elderly? And I know not only does that have to be worked out in terms of taxes and developers and all that, but also utilities and the fact that Chelsea is a very small city, right? We're not even six miles long by six miles wide. We're, we're not even that far. So I don't know what the possibilities are on that. And finally, I've heard a lot of complaints about the Chelsea Street Bridge, apparently, that there's a lot of difficulty and a lot of people that are, it seems like it's not as flexible and working as well as it should be, I guess. I saw on Twitter that it was in the upright and locked position for like an hour and a half or two hours and then it finally came down, something like that. So that's the other, you know, things that I wonder about because if I see them on Facebook or Twitter and I know it could be right, it could be wrong, but this is what I'm hearing, not only from there but from the neighborhood as well. And then, of course, I have other questions when I get to meet again with the Disability Commission as well. But thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the city council? Seeing none, we will close that portion of the meeting. We'll now move on to communications from the city manager.
First communication, notice of waiver intent. Pursuant to the Administrative Code, Section 112.02, I am writing to notify you of my intention to hire Mr. Harley DeMire, 134 Ridge Road, Revere, Massachusetts, for the part-time building inspector position and to grant him a waiver from the residency requirements set forth in the Administrative Code, Part IV, Section 112.01. Mr. DeMire is the preferred candidate of the ISD Director. A copy of Mr. DeMire's resume is attached. In accordance with Section 112.02, I request that you provide me with any comments on the proposed waiver within seven days.
Chair recognizes Counselor Robinson.
File of communications under suspension, if there's no objections.
Seeing none.
The next communication from the city manager is street light inventory. I am writing in response to the recent city council order requesting that the city inventory all exist, all existing streetlights and take steps to fix all those that are non-working. The Public Works Commissioner has agreed to assign an employee to complete this inventory task. The inventory will take approximately one month. Once we identify all non-working streetlights, the city will assign repairs to our contractor. Please keep in mind that our contract vendor can only repair non-working streetlights if the problem is with the streetlight itself. However, on many occasions, the problem is with the wiring from ever-source. When that is the case, the city must rely upon ever-source to fix the problem on its own and often slow repair schedule. In most instances where streetlights have been out for long periods of time, the problem is one that can only be remedied by ever-source and the city is awaiting that ever-source repair.
Chair recognizes Counselor Lopez.
I've defiled communication. If there's no objection, I would like to speak on it, please.
You may.
Yes, I was, I was reading this response by the city manager where it said that it's gonna take a month counts. How many lights are not working in the city? I think I can do that myself. It won't take that long. Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none. Next communication.
Next communication from the city manager. Patrols in Sector 4. Dear councilors, I am writing in response to the recent city council order requesting an update on police patrols in Sector 4. I have attached for your review a memorandum from Police Chief Brian Kies highlighting the impact patrols conducted in Sector 4 during the last quarter of 2019. A total of 579 such patrols occurred in Sector 4 during that period. According to Chief Kies, impact patrols are short-term patrols of anywhere from 15 to 30 minutes on foot intended to have a visible impact on the area.
Chair recognizes Counselor Lopez.
Communication, I would also like to speak on this.
You may.
The report that we have here is something that has already been done. Bethlehem Square, Bosom Park, Chelsea Square, Cayman Park, Highland Park. We mentioned our street. Our streets are like Marlboro Street, Essex Street, Maverick Street. We need more patrol there. In Chelsea, in Chester Street, that's where a woman got assaulted and they almost dropped her cellphone and she was screaming. That's what we need. We need patrol, actually, right in around the city. Which is, Bethlehem Square, they've been doing that for a while. We need more patrol in our street, like Marlboro, Watts Street, Central Avenue. Thank you.
Next communication.
Next communication, appointments to boards and commissions. Dear counselor, pursuant to Section 4-2 of the Charter of the City of Chelsea, I'm writing to recommend the following individuals to boards and commissions in the city. For appointments to the tree board, Mr. David M. Devian, 20 High Street, Chelsea, for a three-year term expiring in 2023. For appointment to the Board of Health, Ms. Karina S. Color, 55 Eleanor Street, Apartment 11, Chelsea, to serve the remainder of the term of Chris Miller, who has resigned. This term expires on February 25, 2022. For appointment to the Historical Commission, Mr. James Roach, 645 Broadway, Chelsea, for a three-year term expiring in 2023. For reappointment to the Traffic and Parking Commission, Ms. Caroline Vega, 85 Blossom Street, Chelsea, for a new three-year term expiring on March 12, 2023. For reappointment to the Council on Elder Affairs, Mr. Gerald DiStefano, 99 Great Woods Road, Number 1, Sargus, for a new three-year term expiring on March 12, 2023. For reappointment to the Board of Library Trustees, Ms. Alexandria Christmas, 67 Cook Ave, Chelsea, for a new three-year term expiring on March 12, 2023. I respectfully request your approval of these appointments. I have attached the resumes of the new appointments.
Counselor Robinson.
Second reading, under suspension, if there's no objections.
Seeing none, I just want to recognize that we have one of the suggested appointees, Mr. James Roach, in the audience. We appreciate you. For those at home, the, any appointments to the boards, particular new ones, need two readings. We will be voting on it at the next city council meeting.
Administrative order on Council of Elder Affairs. Dear councilors and city clerk Centron White, pursuant to Section 6-1A of the City of Chelsea Charter, I am writing to notify you that I have promulgated a new administrative order regarding the Council on Elder Affairs. As the request of the council and Director Tracy Nowicki, I have reduced the membership of the council from 11 to nine members to make it more efficient.
What is the wish of the council? Counselor Robinson moves that we accept and file under suspension, seeing no objection.
Next communication, a community center and homeless shelter. Dear councilors, I am writing in response to the recent city council orders requesting that I look into the creation of a community center and a homeless shelter. I will discuss each in turn. With respect to the community center, I know that this has been an aspiration of the city council for quite some time. The constraint truly is funding. If the city wishes to create a community center, it will need to make two significant financial commitments. The first will be the commitment of funds for acquisition of a site, either through purchase of a building or a long-term lease and built out of some of existing space in the city. However, even after physical space is required, the city will need a similar significant and long-term financial commitment to staff and equipment. The alternative to creating a brand-new community center is to continue expanding program within our existing Recreation and Cultural Affairs Department, utilizing school space that we currently have available. I do believe that with new space provided by the Clark Avenue Middle School, this may be a more cost-effective means for accomplishing the council's goals. As for a homeless shelter, this is, this too would require a major financial commitment. The city would have to acquire the site by lease or purchase and then engage in what would likely be an extremely costly build-out given to the strict regulatory requirements applicable to shelters. Further, in the case of a homeless shelter, the city would also face the challenge of finding an appropriate location for this use, given the typical objection by abuddies. Frankly, this is not an effort I would recommend pursuing at this time. Please do not interrupt, please do not interpret my lack of enthusiasm for a shelter as lack of empathy for the plight of the city's homeless. We currently spend considerable resources caring for this population through our direct services contracts with Capic and Nott Suffolk, through the efforts of our weekly hub, Roundtable, and through one support for the Daily Resource Center that operates from Inglisial Luz de Cristo. I feel those efforts are both significant and, at the moment, adequate to handle the relatively small number of truly homeless individuals present in our city.
The chair recognizes Counselor Rodriguez.
Objections? And I'll just quickly speak on it in behalf of.
Remires.
And I'm just on part of the community center. I know that's a big topic for a lot of us here. And it does come down to money and I think it's something we can look into. But furthermore, as Tom said, use our resources now. The Recreation and Cultural Fair does have a department in trying to build their community center within. So I suggest people to look into their programs to show that there's a bigger need because they have programs that are not filled and I think the city should look into it. Thank you.
Any other speakers? Seeing none. As you has adopted under suspension. We're moving on to second readings.
Second reading, correct.
Counselor Robinson.
On the financial matters, we have, we have a bunch. I would like to actually move I in regards to the $300,000. I wanna, I'm gonna have something coming up next month in regards to that, so I'd like to lay that on the table, if there are no objections. $300,000.
Motion I has been asked to be laid on the table. It is an order regarding appropriation of funds in the amount of $300,000 in free cash for soundproofing program. That is laid on the table.
Laid on the table. Take all the other ones up under one roll call?
If there are no objections, we can take them up in, in one roll call and.
I'm just trying to find I with the $300,000. I have I 11, I here.
That's a soundproofing council.
Fourth from the bottom on the agenda.
So it's a second reading? We don't have it here?
Yeah, they were in the second reading, yeah. They were presented last.
It was the, on the previous read, measure, it was 11K. So if you look for 11K on the top right hand of the communications, you'll find that that's the one that was, because under the previous meeting, that was the item number.
Right, move to second, right. Okay?
Okay? Thank you.
One roll call. Yes would be in favor for all the appropriations and transfers and no would be to deny.
I would ask the clerk to read all the headings or if you prefer, I would read them.
I'll read them. Go ahead. Okay, so we have an order that the city, city council authorized $50,000 in operating budget from the CIP Fire Department to the FY20 AID Units Project. We have a transfer of authorized, of 4,500 salary reserve account to the library department salaries account. We have an, let's talk about that. We have an order that the city council appropriate funds in the amount of $400,000 in free cash to the FY20 DBW Streets and Sidewalk Capital Street Lights Account. We have an order for the appropriation of funds in the amount of $115,000 in free cash to the FY20 DBW Streets and Sidewalk Street Signs. We have a amount of $35,000 in free cash appropriation to FYDBW Streets and Sidewalks overtime for FY20. We have the amount of $100,000 of free cash into FY20 DBW Streets and Sidewalk Capital Road Improvements Account. We have $150,000 in free cash to the FY20 DBW Structures and Grounds Building Maintenance Account. $300,000 in free cash appropriated to FY20 Planning Department Contract Services Account. I'm sorry, that one was on the, laid on the table. That's laid on the table. We have the amount of $100,000 in free cash to the FY20 Planning Department Downtown Initiative for downtown events and public art. We have the amount of $50,000 in free cash to the FY20 DBW Solid Waste Trash Containers Account. We have $30,000 in free cash FY20 DBW Streets and Sidewalk Street Signs Account for new holiday decorations. We have $350,000 in free cash to the DBW Streets and Sidewalk Other Capital Account for the Hooper Street Erosion Wall, I'm sorry, Erosion Control for the, the wall. We have $350,000 in free cash FY20 DBW Solid Waste Trash Pickup Disposal Account for debris disposal out of the city yard. We have $250,000 in free cash to the Willow Street Project Account for engineering work related to the Willow Street flooding. $900,000 in the water retained earnings from F, to the FY20 CIP Upper Broadway Construction Project for utility work in the Upper Broadway area. We have the appropriation of funds in the amount of $900,000 in the store retained earnings to the FY20 CIP Upper Broadway Construction Project. That's it?
I.
The chair recognizes Counselor Robinson.
For the record, we did hold a finance committee meeting last Tuesday evening. In attendance was the president, Todd Taylor, myself and Naomi Savat. And we discussed all these matters. And at this time, I'd ask for a roll call if there is no objections from my colleagues.
Any other comments? Seeing none, the roll call will be.
A yes vote would be to approve all of the transfers and appropriations and no vote would be denied. Counselor Zabbert?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Ray Cooperow absent. Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Vido absent. Counselor Maldonado?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Abadina?
Yes.
And Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Nine in favor and not opposed, two absent. The motion is adopted.
Motion is adopted. On, onto new business.
New business. First order under new business, Counselor Zabbert introduced request that the city manager look into the purchasing of tablets, cases, keyboards and styluses for each of the city council members.
The chair recognizes Counselor Zabbert.
I approve the motion to adopt on a roll call vote.
You object to the reading?
I object to this order.
Well, you can only, you can either vote no or ask for a second reading and waive the first reading. Or wait for a roll, it's gonna be a roll call vote, so.
No, I, I vote to continue. If she can continue.
If he's object to the reading, he can't.
I object to the reading. He can't continue, it has to go to the second reading, the next meeting.
She's, he's objecting to the first reading and it moved to her second reading.
No, so wait, can you clarify that, Mr. President?
The order was introduced by Counselor Zabbert and Counselor Lopez has objected to.
Is it okay if I speak on the matter?
It's already been waived to a second reading.
So, so did it get killed for her?
No.
She can still present it?
It just gets, any, any order introduced by the city council, city councilor, if objected to the first reading, automatically goes to a second reading.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
It'll be brought up for clarification to those in the audience. This order, which was a, a request to look into the purchase of tablets, cases, keyboards and styluses for the councilors, essentially iPads for those better known as, was introduced by Counselor Zabbert. The reading was objected by Counselor Lopez. It'll get read at the next city council meeting.
Okay. Next order introduced by Counselor Taylor. Request that the Traffic and Parking Commission look into solutions to resolve the current extreme backups on Washington Avenue and Route 16, whether it be by changing the lane configuration or adding more time at the set of lights or both.
Counselor Taylor.
Yeah, can I adopt it under suspension and speak on it, please?
If there's no objection, you may speak.
So for anybody who lives in Prattville, one of the things that I heard, have heard most from you is the traffic backups on Washington Avenue. So I assume that this is controlled by Mass DOT but if we can try to talk to them about the extreme backups that are affecting our community, it would sure move things along if we could either lengthen the amount of green lights or change the configuration of the lanes. So the right-hand lane is a right-hand lane turn only. So it'll keep the traffic flowing onto Route 16 and the left lane could be a left-hand turn and straight. That would solve most of the problems if that was okay. So I, this is a real problem in Prattville and I appreciate it, thank you.
That mo, that motion is adopted under suspension. It has been brought to my attention that in the packet of financial transfers orders that we overlooked a, one of the orders, and that is order that the city, it's on a second reading, order that the city hereby adopts the provisions of MGL Chapter 60, subsection 3F for the purpose of creating a Veterans Assistance Fund and operating such fund in full accordance with the statute. Do I have a motion? Move through a roll call vote.
Was it in the package?
It was in the packet. Got it? Wasn't in the packet, I don't think, and I didn't read it. I did not read that one.
Let me see if it's in, call recess. Call recess.
We're gonna have a five-minute recess, just go for it. Okay. Counselor Robinson moves that we have a roll call.
The order was introduced by Counsel Robinson, Chairman of the Subcommittee on Finance. Order that the city hereby accepts the provisions of the Massachusetts General Law, C60, and 3F for the purpose of creating a Veterans Assistance Fund and operating such. 3F, for the purpose of creating a Veterans Assistance Fund and operating such fund in full accordance with the statute.
Good. Motion to adopt. Roll call. By Counsel Robinson. Clerk call roll.
A yes would be to adopt.
Counsel Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Initially, at the last meeting, I asked for this to go to a second reading, so I wanna thank the Council for bringing it back up this quickly. I was hoping that we were able to try to get it into a subcommittee, but we did not. I guess they took it up at the finance meeting, which I missed. But I looked into it. I know it's something that we're trying to do, the voluntary, voluntary service of those who want to contribute to this fund, to make some funds available. I just thought that we should have gave a little more thought on it, talked to our Veterans Department downstairs. I didn't have a chance to say so, but I'll be supporting the motion. Thank you.
Counsel Robinson.
Actually, I did spend some time with the Veteran Service Officer. I think I'd like to amend and move it back to conference because I've had some other conversations. This is a voluntary program for veterans and I'd like, and I'd like to explore it a little bit more to look at another alternative. So if we can, I would like to amend it to move it, move it to a conference.
The Counsel Robinson is asking this to be sent to conference on, which, which committee?
Committee of the whole.
Subcommittee on Conference.
Subcommittee on Conference. Suspension? Yep. We're now move on back to new business. We're on item C.
Okay. Order introduced by Counsel Taylor, request that the City Manager instruct the Chief of Police to assign an officer to enforce the no-left turn on Adams and Garfield between 7:00 and 9:00 a.m.
Chair recognizes Counsel Taylor.
Move to adopt under suspension and speak on it, please.
Seeing no objection, you may speak.
Again, some of the traffic problems in Prattville, this is another one where in the morning, people constantly turn left onto Garfield from Adams, where there's no left turn, and it's a complete backup and is dangerous. So I'd like the City Manager to speak to the Chief of Police to try to get some enforcement in this area. Thank you.
Final order introduced by Counsel Taylor, request that the Traffic and Parking Commission look into placing a sign at the intersection of Garfield and Sagamore that reads "No blocking the intersection, $500 fine."
Chair recognizes Counsel Taylor.
I'd like to amend this order, if I could, to strike the $500 fine and replace it with the $150 fine, which I gather is the correct amount for blocking an intersection. And I'd also move to amend that it would state for the DPW to paint the intersection so that they can clearly see where the intersection starts, so cars don't pass into that field.
Suspension?
Under suspension, yes.
Okay, that's the last order, Mr. Chairman.
Are there any announcements? Any moments of silence? Counsel Robinson asks that we have a moment of silence for Colby Bryant and his daughter.
And the other.
And the other seven individuals that accompanied him. Let's move, the meeting is adjourned.